All right, go ahead and call the call meeting for August 11th, 2020 to order. And do I have a motion to enter a closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-37111, Discussion, Consideration, or Interviews of Perspective Candidates for Employment, Assignment, Appointment, Promotion, Performance? The motion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body appointments.
I move that we enter in a closed session for the reasons stated.
Second.
All right. Do you want me to mention that now? Councilman Mumpower is running a little bit late and will be joining us in the closed session when he gets here. Clerk, call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower. Mr. Mumpower is not here. Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
No.
Hartley.
Yes. Members will certify that only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as specified in the motion to convene the executive session were discussed. Clerk, please call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower. Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Upstaying.
Hartley.
Yes. All right, I'll close the call meeting. And now, call to order the regularly scheduled city council meeting for August the 11th, 2020. Would you please join me in a moment of silent prayer? Please stand, say the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's minute. Two things. One, I'd like to make note of the resignation or retirement of Marlon Goff, I think it was last week, who served police department. And typically, those of you who've been coming to these meetings for a long time know usually when someone retires with many years of service, we try to recognize them. But given the changes due to social distancing and other things, we're not able to do that now. But I think in conversations with the city manager, we hope to do that sometime in the fall, catch up, and let these people know that they were, you know, thank them, give them a plaque and thank them. But we do appreciate Officer Goff's service to the city. Also, I just, once again, as I've done for the past probably three or four meetings, just to remind everyone to, when you're out in public, try to social distance if you can, stay six feet apart. When you're indoors, wear a face covering. If you're outside and you can't social distance, wear a face covering and wash your hands. It is very important to follow those three simple steps to help keep the number of cases in our community down so that businesses can remain open. And here, next week, hopefully, the school system will start back to school with in-class, in-person for our young children. And so we want to keep the community as safe as possible. So I would encourage everyone to do those three steps as much as they can. Does anybody have any comments? City manager?
No comments.
All right. Matters to be presented by the public non-agenda items, I don't think anyone signed up. So, who wants to comment? We'll move to item number one, public hearing on, oh, excuse me, skipped over item D, adoption of the agenda.
Move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, you have a motion by Councilman Osborne, a second by Vice Mayor Farnum. Clerk, call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes. Okay. Regular agenda. Item number one, public hearing on tax-exempt status for properties owned by the Boys and Girls Club. And I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and I have the staff report.
Hi, counsel. Tonight is the public hearing on the tax-exempt status reported to Boys and Girls Club. They have requested tax exemption for some property located just really right across the hill from us here on some property that they were given by Hight Crowder back on December 31st of 2018. So tonight is just a public hearing for individuals to speak on that. I do know that Ms. Asia Malone with Boys and Girls Club is here and she may be able to shed some light on the potential use for that property.
Okay. Do you like to speak, Ms. Malone? Yeah, okay. Do you, no, Ms. Malone. So, go ahead and state your name and address, please.
Name and address?
Yeah.
Okay. Asia Malone, the interim CEO of the Boys and Girls Club. And my address is 90 Hilltop Drive, Bristol, Virginia 24202. And so actually, how the gift of this building came about was Mr. Crowder owned it and it was an apartment building. And he had trouble keeping consistent tenants. But on the days that he would come to collect the rent, he would see our children in the garden and in the other buildings playing. And he approached us and said, I have this building that's 28,000 square feet. What do you think you could use it for? And at the time, my predecessor, Dick Collins, really wanted to turn that building into a STEM center. So we began lobbying in Richmond and meeting with some folks from Virginia Tech and other places around the area and found out that the funding source for that really wasn't available to local nonprofits. And then COVID happened. And so a lot of other funding sources kind of began to dry up. So we have approached all the Boys and Girls Clubs in Virginia and our national organization. And what we're looking to do is to take that building and to create a hybrid model to where we offer career clusters and the children, and it would start in third grade and go up to their senior year in high school. But there would be a specialized career trade that they would learn. So if they wanted to learn computer repair, if they wanted to learn how to be a cook, we're going to target and survey, we're going to survey, and then we're going to target the most popular career clusters because we feel like that's the best way to kind of get them engaged for the future. And studies show that if we start as early as third grade getting kids to think about their future, the least likely they are to get in trouble because they have something to look forward to. So we're just, we want to use the building to kind of expand on the current mission that we have now. But it is going to take a lot of work and we are going to have to renovate it to make it work. So I don't actually have a timeline for you. I can't tell you when we're going to be able to have kids in the building, but the plan is to use the building for children.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Malone. And since this is the public hearing part, we're here for some other comments. And when we get down to item number four, the resolution, people, if members of council have comments, we may ask you to come back up.
Okay, thank you.
And answer specific questions.
Excuse the casual attire.
Okay, so we had, did have one other individual that signed up. Mr. Pollard, if you wanted to speak?
Thank you very much, gentlemen of the council. My name is Michael Pollard. I live at 101 Ashley Drive. I don't want to appear a, the bad guy here because I very much respect what they're doing. Their plans for the property sound, well, in my opinion, awesome. My concerns that I expressed at the last meeting, and I actually have a printed copy of the email as well. I sent this as an email to the city manager last week after seeing his response in the packet for the agenda. I don't want to rehash too much of what's in the email because you may have already been provided copies. I did not send them individually to the members of the council because I didn't want to go around the city manager's authority on that. I've had some difficulty with trying to stay where I'm supposed to be on some issues, so I didn't want to preempt him on that this time. Basically, the bottom line of it is that according to his documentation that he provided in the, in the agenda packet, the Virginia constitutional requirement is that property must be used by its owner for religious, charitable, patriotic, historical, so on and so forth purposes. And his, his documentation specified that it is not sufficient that the organization is themselves tax exempt. That may be sufficient for income per tax purposes, but not for property exemption. And according to the organization's own documentation that they provided, they were not using the property as of when they submitted for the exemption. Now, the documentation also gives cases that demonstrate that once they start preparing for use, it doesn't necessarily have to be in use, but once they start preparing for use, then it qual, then it can be considered a qualify at that point. But according to one of the examples that he gave, and the, the original document that he cited actually has this, this phrase in upper, in all caps, "The controlling factor is the dominant purpose in the use of the property in determining whether a certain property is exempt from taxation." And he cited the specific case with that. The, the organization is great. The city does not, as he, as he gave at the last meeting, the city does not have the standing to question their exemption because they have been granted that by the state. However, the city also does not have constitutional authority to give a tax exemption on property that is not being actively at the time, at least planned, for use in a qualifying purpose. They have a great purpose planned. I have no problem with them receiving exemption going forward. But as of when they filed for the exemption, they were not yet using it, and as such, they do not qualify for exemption prior to that date. And I do have all the cases specified in the email that I provided. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollard. I believe that may be the first time I've ever seen that red light come on while you're up there.
Counsel, in response to Mr. Pollard's email, first, the case that is cited, City of Richmond, the United Givers Fund of Richmond, Henrico and Chesterfield Incorporated, 205 Virginia 432, a 1964 case, what Mr. Pollard fails to further mention is that case goes on to further state, that the court pointed out in the determination of whether the property was exempt from taxation, the controlling factor was the dominant purpose in the use of the property. Well, in this case, the dominant purpose, based on what Ms. Malone has said tonight, is to provide learning opportunities for children that attend the Boys and Girls Club. But the most important part that Mr. Pollard left out of the email was, is that the court also held that the property was not subject to apportionment because any non-exempt use of the property was not separable from the exempt use. So in other words, if you have an exempt use of one property, but if there's also a piece of it being used for a non-exempt purpose, you cannot have a non, you cannot, not, you have to give the exemption to the whole and not the part. So based on what Ms. Malone has advised counsel here tonight, it's the use, and their use, the intended use is for learning for children, for career opportunities, and that you cannot separate whether it's an exempt or a non-exempt property. I'll, and well, and I'll just go to say, Mr. Pollard, in regards to the things that were in all caps letters, that's the head notes, and they put the head notes in all caps to cases.
Anybody else want to comment that did not? Again, we can, we'll probably have more discussion of this when we get down to the actual resolution. So with that being said, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And we'll move to item number two on the agenda, the Highlands Community Service Board Performance Contract Approval. And Ms. Holmes, Rebecca Holmes is here, if you want to speak briefly.
Good evening. Do you need name and address? Rebecca Holmes, I'm representing Highlands, 610 Campus Drive in Abingdon. Tonight, you have in front of you what you see on an annual basis, and that being the approval of our performance contract. It does look a little bit different than what you've seen in the past. They've reorganized the process just a little bit, and this is an interim contract, again, as Ms. Malone stated, and then COVID happened. They did not have an opportunity to fully execute the, the annual and biannual renewal of the contract. So what you have in front of you is a temporary one that is scheduled to cover us through December. So we will be back October, November, whenever they get the final version out for us to request the full term approval. But there has been a little bit of reorganization. The only content that is actually different than what you have seen historically is under Exhibit M, which is a portion of representation of the Department of Justice settlement agreement that Virginia, the Commonwealth remains under for intellectual and developmental disability services, and the massive amount of compliance issues, data tracking standards, and services that are required of community services boards in that respect. Otherwise, there's nothing new or exciting in this contract from what you've seen before.
Okay. All right. Questions, while she's here? Any comment from the public? Nobody signed up, but, okay. Do I have a motion from counsel?
I move to approve the performance contract.
Second.
All right. I have a motion from Councilman Osborne, a second from Vice Mayor Farnum. Any discussion? I just, as the city representative to Highlands Community Service, I will say I appreciate the work that y'all do. Every, having been there for six years now, I still learn more and more about what y'all do. You do a great job to serve many in our community here in Bristol and Washington County, so appreciate the work you do.
Thank you.
All right. That being said, clerk, call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes. All right. Thank you. Item number three, resolution of support for school resource officer.
Counsel, we have been asked, and I know the school board passed a resolution supporting the Grants Program Fund for school resource officers. Evidently, there is some discussion in Richmond about potentially doing away with the grants for the school resource officer program. Now, the city does not necessarily take part in that grant program anymore. I know at one point, we took advantage of those grants. At this point, they're completely funded through the city. But Senator Pillion has requested that we show support for this resolution. And I'll go ahead and read the resolution now. I don't believe it was included in the packet for some reason, but the resolution states, "Whereas the Virginia School Resource Officer Grants Program and Fund was established by the General Assembly in 1999 as a special non-reverting fund within the state treasury to employ uniformed school resource officers, and whereas the enabling legislation which created the SRO Grants Program and Fund passed the Senate of Virginia 39 to 0 and the Virginia House of Delegates 89 to 0, and whereas the program funds school resource officer and school security position salaries in elementary, middle, and high schools with a local match based on composite index, and whereas SROs have served a vital role in keeping our students, faculty, and staff safe while developing positive relationships between students, law enforcement, and the broader community in the city of Bristol for several years, and whereas the absence of state funding will greatly reduce or eliminate our ability to post SROs in our schools and in the future, and whereas Governor Ralph Northam stated on June 13th of 2019 that, quote, "It is paramount that we continue to make smart investments to keep Virginia schools safe and to create supportive learning environments for our students. The school resource officers and school security officers hired through these grants not only make our schools safer, but also enhance our communities by building strong positive relationships with students, faculty, and parents," end quote. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council for the city of Bristol does hereby request that Governor Ralph Northam, in conjunction with the Senate of Virginia and the Virginia House of Delegates, maintain the existence of the School Resource Officer Grants Program and fund with adequate funding therein, adopt this the 11th day of August, 2020."
Okay. Thank you. Again, no one signed up, but does anybody have any comment? Ms. Marnie?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Nancy Marnie. I'm a resident of the city of Bristol, Virginia. I am a taxpayer. I am a property owner. I support this very, very strongly. And I support this through personal experience. I live in the vicinity of the Virginia Middle School on Euclid Avenue, and I have seen the results more than once of having a, an officer in the school and out on the property. And I think it's a wonderful idea. I have seen some of the things they have done, not everything, but I have seen some of the things they have done. And there is a certain security and a professionalism that I have seen that, to me, is very impressive. And I certainly hope this council will give full support to continuing this program because, in my opinion, it is a very good and a very strong and constructive program to have in our public schools and in our community. Our neighborhood appreciates this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Marnie. Anyone else coming? All right. What's the pleasure, counsel?
I move to approve the resolution.
Second.
I have a motion, Councilman Osborne, a second by Vice Mayor Farnum. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'll say, say a couple of things real quick. You know, sometimes the General Assembly has a hit and sometimes they have a miss. And looking to defund school resource officers would be a miss on their part. It's, we have a tremendous opportunity in the state of Virginia to have these school resource officer positions funded through these grants, you know, not only in our locality, but in a lot of localities. And it really does, as, as Ms. Marnie said, it provides safety to the schools, you know, because we want of utmost importance to protect our children that are in schools, you know, in this day and time, you don't know what's going to happen. So it gives us an opportunity to be able to fully protect our children. And it gives children an opportunity to be able to interact with, with police officers in a way that, you know, they, they learn that, you know, police officers are good and that you can trust them, they're a responsible, safe adult. And it's a huge, it's a huge thing for our schools and for a lot of schools in southwest Virginia and, and across the state, that we are able to have these school resource officers. So, you know, I'm fully in support of this resolution, and I would hope that when the assembly comes in later this month, they would not look for cuts with our resource officers.
Absolutely. I agree with everything he said.
Any, any more comment? I will add, I agree, Mr. Osborne, I agree with Ms. Marnie, living within sight of an elementary school. I know, you know, they, they not only make the schools safer, but they make the community safer. And having children in that school, you know, that's the first person you see in the morning when you drop them off and when you pick them up. And they do a wonderful job, and I'm very glad that, that they're in all the schools here in our community, and would encourage the General Assembly to, as much as they can, put them and keep them in all the schools throughout the Commonwealth because it, it does make a difference. So with that being said, clerk, call the roll.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes. Item number four, resolution to provide tax-exempt status to the Boys and Girls Club properties. Staff report, is that you or Barker or?
Ms. Barker, if she wants to speak to it real quick, she's more than welcome to.
Okay, I didn't know which one.
Chloe Barker, Commissioner of the Revenue, City of Bristol. They actually bought the property 5/21/19. No property taxes were paid in 2019 for, Mr. Crowder did not pay his taxes, the prorated tax amount. So the full taxes is due for '19 and '20. The value of the property that's in question is $317,600 combined for the three pieces, and the yearly taxes for that is $3,715.92.
Thank you.
So.
All right. Any questions? Okay, any?
I got a question. So was the, the, the back taxes, you said, was the previous owner, Mr. Crowder, was the responsible party for that?
Yes, that was, that was not prorated. He gave it to them as a gift, but it was, his portion was not paid, and he just recently passed away. But his estate or either the Boys and Girls Club will have to pay it, or it'll stay on the books.
What would the prorated amount be?
Well, they had it till June, excuse me, till May. So, I mean, it's not going to be less than, you know, less than $1,000, about $800 or so.
Has letters been sent to the estate of Mr. Crowder?
I'm sure that Ms. Harris has sent them delinquent notices because Mr. Armstrong's the one that brought it, brought the first bill to me and first of the year that were shown that they were still unpaid.
Has the Boys and Girls Club told you whether they intend to pay or not?
No. That's not been discussed. So I guess my question is, if you all do make it tax exempt, will it be retroactive back to May of '19, or will it be as of today when you make your decision? That's, that's pertinent to me so I can know what to do.
Is, what did you say the prorated amount was again?
I didn't, I didn't write that down. They had it for five and a half month, yeah, five and, four and a half, five and a half months. And then yearly taxes are $37.15, so.
Twelve hundred dollars or something. Twelve hundred, fourteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, so, yeah, it's not so much.
Can you answer her question, Mr. Reed, about, I think your question was, would it be from this point going forward, or would it be?
Retroactive back to the date that they purchased the property.
Well, I think there's probably, I think, if I'm not mistaken, the deed was recorded on that May day in 2019.
Yeah.
As the day the deed was recorded.
Yeah, 5/12/19.
The deed was dated December 31st of 2018.
But wasn't recorded till then.
Right. But, so this goes back to the legal analysis of, as to when someone obtains property, and then a deed is valid upon delivery. And we do know that Mr. Collins signed that deed, I'm assuming, on December 31st of 2018 as well. It looks like there was an acknowledgement there that he had it, so I'm not sure why it wasn't recorded on December 31st, 2018, or shortly thereafter. You know, from a legal perspective, the Boys and Girls Club owned that property on December 31st of 2018. And now if you take the view that they did not own it until the deed was recorded, then the estate would owe the taxes up through May of 12th, or whatever day that was, of 2019. But from a legal perspective, I would argue that the Boys and Girls Club owned that property on December 31st of '18. And that was probably done for the specific purpose, in my view, so that there wouldn't be any taxes owed by Mr. Crowder in year 2019. As far as abating taxes going back to 2019, that's up to purview of counsel.
Well, in my experience... Well, in my experience, I would, I'm no attorney, but I would agree with your interpretation that the transfer of property is not necessarily, recordation of a deed is not necessarily needed to transfer property. I have seen that happen before, which would verify the December 18 date would be the date they had owned it.
Any more questions right now? Okay, public comment, we had the public hearing, but does anybody have any additional comment? So.
Michael.
Oh, you, okay, go ahead, Mr. Pollard.
This does, again, my name is Michael Pollard. I live at 101 Ashley Drive. This does go to one of the notes in my email, though I did cite an incorrect citation that the Commissioner of Revenue should determine whether the organization is exempt. The documentation also cited that the Commissioner of Revenue should determine whether the use is also qualifying. So the documentation provided did not specify whether the, the Commissioner determined that the use was qualifying, and that seems to be an important factor. Though the documentation that Mr. Reed's provided was very, very compelling that the organization owned the property as of December 30th. So that, that is not my challenge at all, the rather the use of the property. And it also specifies that the Commissioner of Revenue is the responsible authority for determining that rather than the City Council. So I was wondering if the Commissioner determined that the use is qualifying.
Would you like to, to address those comments? Ms. Barton?
Well, if I'll, I'll address what Mr. Pollard's talking to in regards to Commissioner of Revenue making that determination. That's an AG opinion from several years ago. The Attorney General said that the Commissioner of Revenue should make a determination in regards to the use of the property. The, regardless of what the Commissioner of Revenue's assessment of that property is, whether it's just property or any other property, the Constitution also states that it's up to the locality to pass this, to have an ordinance in place, which we do for tax exemptions, but to pass it whenever that time comes forward before council.
Mr. Reed is correct in that. But according to the letter that I received from the Boys and Girls Club, it says here, and I'll quote, "Our current plans for the use of the new parcels is to extend additional service to the most at-risk youth in our community under the guidance of the Boys and Girls Club of the Mountain Empire." And, you know, it's my job to make sure that they have their 501(c) and, you know, have the, a use for the per, a purpose for the exemption. And, you know, the rest is up to you all to determine, you know, all their other property is, and it's all right there, right beside of it, but it's not my determination to make.
Yes, if you can do it very quickly. My question was not concerning their intended purposes, which would, in, in my perspective, be the 2020 year, but rather the qualifying use of the property during the 2019 year. I'm fully satisfied that their intentions are, are fully qualifying for their intent for the future, but for the 2019 year.
Okay. All right. We have any, Ms. Malone?
I don't know if many of you are familiar with the laws for licensed daycare in the Commonwealth. It's very difficult. It's very stringent. The inspections and the requirements and all the things that that building is going to have to go through, the processes, these are not things that happen overnight. When COVID happened, you saw a lot of daycare shut down and a lot of daycares weren't able to reopen because of, I'll call it red tape, but it keeps the children safe. A building of that size and of that magnitude, the 28,000 square feet, it's going to have to be tested for asbestos. There are all kinds of environmental things that are going to have to be done. So I would like to speak to the fact that we do not profit off the building. We, we've not made any money off the building. Actually, it's costed us more to have the building for 2019 because the building is now our liability. So we're not really profiting or using that building to make money in any way. But the goal is to be able to provide those programs to children. And the sole purpose of the organization is, like we stated in our letter, to target the most at-risk kids in the area and provide an expansion of our programs. We're working very diligently, but it's going to take time, but it has to be a safe place for the children to go. We're not going to rush that. I'm not going to rush it. I don't know. I'm, I'm interim. So if my board doesn't like what I have to say tonight, I might not be here in six months, but I don't think, I don't think they'll disagree. They put up with me for 12 years and I, I don't see it going anywhere. But I just want to speak to the purpose, and the purpose is for the children. And that's been our purpose for 70 years, and it's going to be our purpose for 70 more.
Any, any more comment from the public? Did you go ahead and read the resolution?
Sure. Resolution authorizing tax exempt status for the Boys and Girls Club, whereas the Boys and Girls Club of the Mountain Empire is recognized as a charitable organization pursuant to Section 501(c)(3) of the Internal Revenue Code, and whereas the Boys and Girls Club has requested exemption from property taxes pursuant to Section 58.1-3651 of the 1950 Code of Virginia's amended, and whereas a public hearing was held after publication of notices required by state code. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Bristol, Virginia that the following tax parcels are owned by the Boys and Girls Club and restricted to use for charitable purposes be exempt from property taxes. Piedmont Avenue, parcel number 27, 1, 18/9; 2020 Rebecca Street, 27, parentheses, 1, 18/8; and 305 Rebecca Street, 27, 1, 18-10. Adopt this the 11th day of August 2020.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. So what is the pleasure of council?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution providing tax exempt status to the Boys and Girls Club retroactive to the date the agreement was signed with Mr. Crowder on December 31st, 2018.
All right. We have a motion by Councilman Osborne, a second by Vice Mayor Farnham. Any council discussion?
Well, I'd just like to say, as far as this goes, I mean, it's, it's fairly cut and dry on what we need to do, so, so I don't think that's a problem. But to Ms. Malone, I'd like to say thank you for what you're all, what you all are doing in the community for the past seven decades and for what you want to do with this building. I think this will be a great thing to give a lot of kids who may be disadvantaged a way to learn a career or learn trade or just learn life skills. So, so thank you all for what you're doing down there.
Yeah, I'd like to say Boys and Girls Club is, I mean, they've done a tremendous work over probably, I'd say, four decades, really. I mean, since I was a child, you know, a lot of people came through that organization. They've done a very good job. We can't get in the business of the city, of taking these organizations that, that have been the pillar of this, this city and treat them like, you know, the tax exempt over $1,000. I can't even really believe we're even arguing over this or even talking about it. You know, they've done a great job over four decades. They deserve tax exempt status. They've been that way for four decades. They need to continue that way. These kids have gotten a lot out of that organization. And I will say that the STEM program is, is a very noble cause, but it's a very difficult cause. I would support that. I've been trying to get a hybrid kind of, what you call a hybrid maker space business opportunity organization started. It doesn't seem to get traction. But one thing this community misses is taking the educational system and tying it to hands-on to get these kids the training they need to really go be a carpenter and a computerized person that's, that's, that's moving this market into a place that we've never seen before, right? So these kids have a lot of ingenuity. And so we need to, we need to get behind this initiative that they're doing. There needs to be another resolution. There needs to be another budget item that gets behind what they're doing because there is tobacco money. There are grants out there. We, as a city, could support what they're doing with, with a grant that goes before the Tobacco Education Committee and get them probably a couple million dollars. So the money's there. It, it's just a matter of, is it a priority for the city? And I think it is. I think when you look at the high school and the middle school, there's public education, but then there's a big gap. They're not ready for the, for the private market. And what gets them ready is let them go after school, let them learn these skills, let them put their hands on stuff, learn how to build a computer, learn how to tear it down, learn how to build a car, learn how to put it back together again. I mean, you'd be surprised what they learn just in that atmosphere, right? And it's got to be pretty free, open, right? It can't be something you charge for them to do, right? But it's critical. The best employees in the market today are the ones that had early on hands-on training. It's the ones that learned how to fix their tractor and fix their lawnmower and fix their car. And yeah, oh, by the way, they got an education, but those are the most valuable because they can get things done. And those are the ones that stay employed, right? And so we all have to understand that, and I think we got to take this one step further from tonight and talk about how we support a budget item to get this, to get this program going in Bristol. It could be a really economic development tool for Bristol. There'll, there'll be kids coming out of that program that start businesses here, right? They will start a business because they got training there. And you'll, over 10 or 15 years, have two or three that blossom into a business that's very successful, that hires 10 and 20 people at a time. And that's the way you, that's the way you grow a city economically. You grow it from within, right? You don't keep whale hunting and try to, you know, get the Amazons of the world to come see us. You, you grow it from within. And this could be our opportunity to do that. So we need to really think hard about that.
Now, that's a good point, Councilman Mumpower. As you say, the Boys and Girls Club have done a lot for this community over the years. I know they'll put this building to good use. And, you know, I think when you look at the needs of our city, you know, one of the things that continually comes up is workforce development. And so working with these kids, whether it be STEM or career exploration or just at a young age, getting them their hands on with these tools, I think will pay great dividends down the road. So this tax exemption is just a, a small way we can help, help free up some cash for them to operate. But, you know, as you point out, it may be something we want to look at down the road and ways we can help leverage grant resources or whatever, because I think it has a lot of potential in terms of helping these young people and developing the workforce for the future. So with that being said, Clerk, Calvero.
Farnham.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes. Okay. I'm number five, the Planning Commission Annual Report for fiscal year 1920. Ms. Morgan?
Thank you, Mayor and council members. This is a report that is done every year. It is required by state code, but I would hope even if it wasn't, we would still do the report. And you all usually get it about this time every year. And the mayor had asked that I just come and give a very brief summary. It is in your packet, several pages. And I just want to note that the first page does list the planning commissioners who have served during the, it's based on fiscal year. So, you know, July 1st last year till June 30th this year, this past June 30th. We did have some turnover in the planning commission and because we do have people that have to serve and work as well, so it's kind of hard sometimes to be able to keep folks on if they have conflicts with their work schedule. So, but I do want to say I'm thankful that we have now seven full members of the commission. And I want to stop at this point kind of and thank Mr. Wingard for his almost three and a half years of service as the City Council representative. And actually, I'm going to ask the chairman to give you a certificate. Maybe he's going to like that.
He just wants a get out of jail free card, that's all he wants.
We always do this with the ones that have left the commission, and Mr. Mike Browswell as well will get a similar certificate. But I just thought since we were going to, you were going to be here, we'd do it tonight.
Come on down. Come on down, Price is Right.
I thought they were going to elbow-bong. Okay.
Hey, I ain't afraid.
But the format of the report is, is a little bit different this year. It's chronological. It's a little bit easier, I think, to understand. But I do want to say that the commission, if you look at the tally and the summary at the end, you might think there's not too many numbers in there in terms of things that were approved or reviewed. But if you look at the meeting schedule, they had nine regular meetings, they had eight spec, special meetings, and then plus four attendance at four public hearings. So, and that is, I know you all know, but for the public, that's all volunteer time. I, you know, certainly we all honor and appreciate that.
We don't have to get our lunches anymore.
Planning Commission is not a paid body. But most, a lot of work, as you all know, has been gone into the last year, this past fiscal year with the proposed revisions to the zoning ordinance and maps, and especially this past fiscal year on the maps. And all that is finally coming, lurching a little more toward fruition, hopefully. And just to remind you, we can do have the Planning Commission meeting coming up on next Monday. They will have their regular meeting at noon. There will be an open house from 1:00 to 5:00. And then there'll be the Planning Commission public hearing at 6:00 that evening. And then it'll go over to, come to you all for public hearing late at your second meeting. So there is a lot of information on the website, and I just want to make you aware of that. And that is, I guess, about all. You have the information. If you have any questions about anything that they worked on, I'd be glad to answer that.
Questions, Ms. Morgan? Thank you for the report. And, and again, I appreciate the work that everyone has put in on the Planning Commission. I know, as you pointed out, this year's been a very busy year, and we're about to see the, the fruits of that labor here fairly shortly with the revisions to the zoning ordinance and map. And, and just to remind the public that's here and people watching that next Monday, August 17th, at noon, the Planning Commission will have their public meeting, followed by an open house from, they'll have their regular meeting followed by their open house from 1:00 to 5:00. And then at 6:00, they'll have a public hearing. So there'll be opportunity to make comments. You'll be their staff in the Planning Commission. And then at our next meeting on the 25th, we'll have a public hearing. So there'll be additional time for people to make comments as well.
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you. That's right. And I forgot one more quick little plug, just so you all know, there is a Certified Planning Commissioners Institute that's held in the state, usually two or three times a year. We've only, since I've been here, only sent one planning commissioner to do that. It's always kind of been my wish that we would, you know, send one a year. And I was looking it up this year. It's always, it's expensive, so it's a budget thing, really. It's about $500 to register and then the travel cost and all that, because you go two days and you come back and do homework, and you go another two days after that. But because of COVID, it's all virtual. It's still going to be the same registration, but there would be no travel costs. So maybe this coming year, we could send another commissioner.
That, that would be great if you could.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item number six, supplemental appropriation of $653,000, $53,114.
Mayor, members of council, this agenda item is a supplemental appropriation of $653,114. Item background, on June 23rd, 2020, the Bristol, Virginia City Council adopted fiscal year 21 budget. The listed items are an additional appropriation to the original budget. General fund totals $233,450. It includes city attorney carryover of $194,407. Fire department donations received in fiscal year 20 but unexpended at June 30th of $5,000. Fire department grant monies, aid to localities in fiscal year 20 but unexpended, $14,731. Swiftwater rescue team funding, $1,944. City sheriff and jail inmate holiday PAC revenue received in fiscal year 20 but unexpended at June 30th, 2020, $3,880. And city sheriff and jail grants, DARE proceeds received in fiscal year 20 but unexpended at June 30th, $4,687. Hazmat funding received in fiscal year 20 but unexpended at June 30th of $5,801. Capital projects fund totals, capital projects fund total, $422,664. This is a FEMA AFG grant that was originally budgeted in fiscal year 20 but will be expended in fiscal year 21. Federal funds total $404,762. Staff recommends that council approve the supplemental appropriation as listed.
Okay. Thank you. It's a pleasure, Council.
Mood approved the supplemental appropriation as presented.
Second.
Have a motion by Councilman Osborne, and second by Vice Mayor Farnum. Any discussion? Clerk Colwell.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Osborne. Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
All right. Item number seven, discussion of CVB funding. And I guess that's actually on me, since I'm the one that wanted it on the agenda. You know, what this is, you know, for some time, we've, discussion of where, what we should fund all, all outside agencies, but particularly the Convention Visitors Bureau, Discover Bristol, has come up during the annual budget process. I know last year, maybe even the year before, I think, Discover Bristol had asked both cities to look at, you know, some kind of formula that, that could get them to a more stable source of funding. So it wasn't just every year, you know, an appropriation that was whatever the council saw fit. And, you know, we had some joint meetings along those lines with Bristol, Tennessee. Particularly, the last meeting we had was right before the COVID-19 crisis hit in, I think, the second week of March. I think the next week was when schools and everything started shutting down. But Ms. Rita McClenni from Virginia Tourism was here. And so, so we never really had that discussion. I know Bristol, Tennessee has had some discussions amongst themselves. They've also, at various times, mentioned, you know, the possibility of us having another joint meeting. So before we even begin a, a joint meeting, I think we need to have some discussion amongst the five of us regarding, kind of get some sense of where we're at. But the long-term goal of this, I think, is to, you know, find that level that, that we think we should reinvest back into marketing our, our community to help continue to grow our lodging taxes and provide Discover Bristol with, with a, a good baseline of support so they can go and not just react from year to year, but, but know there's a, a fairly stable source of funding there so they can start longer-term projects and multi-year projects. With that being said, what you'll see here on the screen is I just went back and took that information straight from the budgets that's on the website. And you can kind of see the total amount. I forget what the, I think the, the one, the blue line is the total amount we've spent of, I believe that's the total amount we spent on all tourism-related funding. And the green line is, is the CVB. So again, that, that's come up, especially in discussions with Bristol, Tennessee, what, you know, that, you know, what you're funding. And they look at their lodging tax going to basically three entities. And so we talked about different formulas between ourselves that take into account population, other variances, I think was, was kind of where that joint meeting in March was. But to look at, you know, we, we are funding things outside of the CVB, outside of birthplace of country music, believing Bristol, various activities. A lot of that's reinvestment, actually back into businesses, to hotels where there are incentives, performance agreements. So that's reinvesting back into tourism. So that, that's kind of where our spending looks at, at a percentage. And that's kind of, I guess, to, to begin this discussion of where, where we think we need to be. I don't know that we'll come to any kind of agreement tonight. That's all right. But I think we need to start having this conversation. And I think having it now is, is a good time in a lot of ways, and particularly having it now where it's not part of the budget process. So we have some time. We don't have to, to make any kind of decision until the net, until the budget, of course. But I think it gives us time to think and start seeing where, where we feel this should kind of settle out. So that's my hope of this. And so we'll have a, a discussion and I guess, anything by hazard comment.
I just wanted to say, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate you bringing this up because I do think it is important. I agree that, that we do need to have this conversation to try to figure it out because, I mean, my first thought is for, for not just the CVB, but any business, it, it's just so hard to make a plan, a long-term plan, whether you're looking at a three-year plan or a five-year plan, when you really don't know how much funding you're going to have 10 months from now. So I think it is important that we're having this discussion. And, and, and they're an asset to the city. My thoughts, what I've learned when I first got here was regarding the CVB, if they, and I'll defer this question to the city manager, just to make sure I'm accurate with this. If we did not have the CVB, the city would have to hire our own employees to, to, for us to get the benefits of what they do. Is that correct? Like a marketing?
If you want to have a marketing department, I mean, in places that's, you know, what Discover Bristol does, they want it not only with Bristol, Tennessee. The city would have to have some form of a marketing department in order to tell citizens from across the region, nationwide, more about why they should spend tourism dollars here in the city of Bristol, Virginia.
And I know, I don't know, did you have that other, there was, I think, another slide, but it showed the absolute dollar amounts over time.
These are the?
That's the first.
Is that it?
No.
These are the ones that we had.
That's part of it. There's another, line item 16. Can you bring that down? There you go.
Yeah. I mean, that's all the, the data that come, no, there was another, I think when I sent it out, I did another chart that had just absolute, that's by percentage. I think I did one where you can see lodging taxes, all tourism expenditures and CVB expenditures in terms of absolute dollar amount, but, which is, like I say, I, I had sent that to the, to the council. But anyway, it's, it's good to kind of see that because I think when you, you, you see that, and it's hard to tell looking at that. But, you know, what, what you, you would see is that over the last 10 years, the lodging tax the city has collected has gone up, but the amount spent on particularly the CVB and has remained relatively flat until the last years and then dropped. And, and even the amount of tourism spending in total's not quite kept up with, with the increase in lodging tax. So, you know, that's part of this discussion as well, is, is what's, what's a good rate to reinvest back into our tourism, is to make sure that, that we have the ability to market our community, but also reinvest in, and into the product that we're creating here.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I, I, I agree. You know, we need to talk. We need to talk about this stuff and stop the shooting from the hip. And, you know, just throwing everything together at a budget time or whatever the case may be. But we need a system in place that is fair to everybody. You know, the taxpayers out here, they're concerned about, you know, the city giving away too much money. Now, we know that there's outside agencies that need to be funded, and they need to have some kind of consistency on that funding to where they can make plans and move forward through their budget cycles and make plans and not get throw huge curveballs like we did one year, you know? So I, I'm in favor of, you know, coming up with a percentage that would be split among these outside agencies to where they would know what they could expect and be able to budget for that. But in my opinion, it needs to be a percentage that is fair to our taxpayers and is not be given excessive amounts of money to fund these outside agencies. Because we are in a high tax bracket in this city with our housing, our trash. You know, we, we just can't do everything for everybody to the tune in which they want and request things to be done. So we need to talk about a percentage and crunch some numbers on that. What would that look like? To where they know that they can pretty much count on this unless there is a crisis. And if the economy goes up, then their percentages goes up. The more money into our lodging, then next year, they get a higher percentage, well, not percentage, but a higher dollar amount. But if COVID kicks in or some other, who knows what, and we plummet, are we going to be on the hook for a fixed dollar amount? And here, we're hurting in the city for funds. So I think it needs to be on a curve percentage to where when the economy's up and everything's good, everything's flowing, everybody's happy. Things start going sour, then everybody has to take the cuts like everybody else and nobody be exempt from it. That is the fairest way to do this. And we need to figure out what percentage rate is fair to the outside agencies and the taxpayer, because it's their money.
I would agree, I would agree in general with what you said. I know, I recall when I first came off, I remember what you were talking about. I'm trying to change the chart, and you mentioned something about having a percentage, you know, set aside specifically for this type of thing. And, you know, even as recently as a couple of months ago, I think myself and Mr. Hartley discussed this, having a percentage. This, this sheet that I think the CVB provided us kind of goes through and lists the percent lodging tax ratio that, that a lot of localities are giving to, giving to CVB funding. And it runs, it runs the, the tables anywhere from Bristol, Virginia, at about 8.8% of our lodging tax as a ratio goes to, goes back to funding them. 8.8% to Stanton is 55 and a half percent. And then Kingsport is 235% of, of their lodging tax intake goes back to the CVB. So there, there is a certain, there is a certain percentage that I'd be comfortable with. And I can tell you it's not 235, but I know it's also not 8 either. So, so I think that there, there needs to be some kind of number percentage-wise on where we're comfortable. I, I agree with you that it doesn't need to be a set, we're going to give you X number of dollars. But, but it can be a percentage because if things go down, the money goes down. If things go up, the money goes up.
And I, I would just add, I, I'd agree with a percentage because I think one of the things it does, and particularly with the CVB, the lodging tax may not be the perfect metric by which to judge, but I think everybody would agree, if they're marketing the community and people are coming here, they're staying, they're extending that stay over, so they're spending the night in a hotel, which our residents wouldn't do. They may go out to eat or go to an attraction or something. But those are clearly out of, mostly out of market visitors. But, and I think there's a line somehow missing on that. But it showed the, the taxes collected. And there again, you can see that their amount remain fairly level. Now, there it is. That's the, I think, the top line. That, that's the taxes collected. You know, it's gone up, but their fundings remain level. So, you know, again, there's no incentive for them. I think that, that's one thing making it a percentage does, is help build in some kind of incentive. So the more people stay in a hotel, then they know that the following year, that's more money they'll get to reinvest back in and get more people to come here and stay. You know, so that, that's one reason I, I think a percentage is a, a good way to do this. What that is, you know, again, that's why we're having this discussion, probably have more discussions than this before we settle on a number. But we need to start having it.
One.
Well, Ms. Morgan, right now, this is just for, for council discuss, this is just to give the five of us a chance to all sit down and talk. You know, if you want to say something, we're not going to take any action tonight. I doubt we'll take any action.
I've already made a statement if it is appropriate.
Uh, no, because this, this is just for the, the council discussion, so.
One, oh, go ahead. The only thing I was going to just kind of throw a wrench in here, I was thinking about, and we talked a little bit this morning about, we're talking about the lodging tax a lot, which is a tax that comes from non-residents, mostly. You would assume residents are not staying in hotels here. So that's the outside tourism dollars coming in. But when we're talking about the, the funding, you know, let's just say the lodging tax was going to be, you know, say 1.4, 1.7 million, depending on the last couple of years. We also bring in maybe over, over $5 million per year over the past few years in meal tax money. So I think you could also argue that some of the meal tax money, and it may be a small percentage, is also part of your tourism dollars. When someone stays in a hotel, they may also go out and, they may spend $30 at a restaurant or they may spend three before they leave town. So, so I was just thinking about trying to come up with that, that ratio, that formula, that percentage, and not just looking at lodging tax, but is there any way to even try to compute a percentage of the meals tax from outside, non-residents? I'm not sure if there's a way to do that or not. Does that make sense, what I'm saying?
I don't, I don't know if it's possible.
Yeah, I, I would hope that this council would just stick to the lodging tax side of it because, I mean, if you want to start splitting it up, trying to decipher how much somebody spends in the city before they pull out the next morning, I mean, you're going to be talking about gas, cigarettes, beer, and everything else. We need to, in my opinion, just stay focused on the lodging taxes and come up with a decent percentage there and not try to split a bunch of hairs.
So I'm in a little bit different camp. So my camp is this, we've got taxpayer revenues, right? Taxes are coming in on lodging and meals, right? It's revenues into the city coffers. And now we say, what do we want to do with those tax revenues? Well, what we really want to do is we want to grow those tax bases, right? We want, we want lodging tax to go up. We want meals tax to go up. We want it to go up. So how do you make it go up? Well, you really Well, you really got to, you really got to understand what the decisions are that cause people to stay on a Bristol, Virginia hotel and what causes them to lodge here versus on Tennessee side or Washington County. And then you understand what makes them decide to go to restaurants. So, it's a business decision. And so, I'm not, I'm not for a percent. I think a percent just makes it easy. I think a percent just kind of allows you to level load the expense. I think you've got to figure out a creative way to target your investment back to the CVB. And so, I've challenged them a few times and I'll say it again. We've got to come up with some programs, right, that really help drive the tax revenue base up. Because when you look at the chart, you know, when you look at the tax revenues on lodging and their funding, they don't, they don't marry up. They actually, the tax revenues went up when their funding was going down. So, it clearly points out, and we all know this, that there's clear decisions that are made by business travelers and people coming into the community of why they stayed at a certain hotel. And we've got to target that. That's where we've got to put the money. As an example, so if somebody's going to come to Bristol, Virginia, what's the first thing they're going to do? They're going to go online and they're going to say hotels near Bristol, Virginia, right? First thing they're going to do, everybody does it. Well, what if we were to have a program to where we gave the CVB money to fund that, to give every dollar booked, dollar reserved, and dollar paid to a hotel room, we gave them a percent to pay back to bookings.com and hotel.com, right? So, hotels.com, they want more revenue. And so, they'll sign up for a percent off that fund. And so, for every dollar you come in, right, you give them 10% of that take, right? So, there are programs, discounts on meals, discounts on hotel rooms, way to drive traffic. You've got to drive traffic, right? Otherwise, it's just, you know, some kind of a traditional marketing scheme, which they're known some work, some don't, because they don't target the audience, right? Especially today because everybody's shopping online, right? They're finding out where they're going to go based on, right, Groupon's and what, you know, who's got the deal of the day, right? So, it's a different day. You know, these, putting the signs on the interstate and all this stuff, people don't pay attention to that as much anymore as they do. So, our challenge is how do we spend these dollars smartly to get those tax revenue lines up? And I think we've danced around that. And I don't think we've hit it on the head yet. And I think we've got to have some talks about how we do that. Otherwise, to me, it's just you're throwing away money, right? You're just putting money out there hoping something sticks, hoping you're driving marketing and advertising dollars to drive traffic. And we already see that we're really not doing that, right? They're bipolar, they move in opposite directions because we're not targeting the decision that's made on where to stay and where to eat. So, how do we do that? That's what we need to figure out. And we're not, we're not in the hotel business and we're not in the restaurant business, most of us, right? So, we've got to get some help. We've got to talk about how to do that, talk to some folks that are in that business, and understand how we best drive those dollars. Because I think if we do it, we could probably increase those tax lines by 20, 30% over a couple, three years. But you're not going to do it if you just decide to put 1% or 2% to CVB. I just don't, I just think you're just throwing money there, but you're just hoping it works. But I don't think it's going to work. You're not targeting the money, you're not targeting against driving sales. And that's been my whole issue all along. You know, most businesses are going to spend no more than 1% of their total revenues on advertising. That's it, 1%. So, if we took that and said, what's 1% of lodging? CVB would, they'd puke on that number, right? I mean, that's hardly anything on 1.4 million, right? Okay, add it to meals. What's it added to meals? Okay, turns into something more significant, you know, maybe $60,000 or 50 or 60. But, you know, 1% is what a business spends on advertising because that's all they can afford. Unless they get really smart and creative about how they drive their customers to make a decision to buy their product. And I think that's our challenge. That's what we've got to do as a city. We've got to be smarter than the other communities and the other municipalities to drive the business. And we're just dancing around that topic. We're not, we're not talking about it enough, we're not wanting to address it, I don't know. But it's a return on the investment dollar. We've got to start talking in terms of real return, watching those dollars go up when you invest in driving them up. And if a program doesn't work, you kill it and you go to the next one. And if that one doesn't work, you kill it. So, sometimes you'll have some hits and you'll have some misses. But if you keep after it, you will figure out the formula, right, that drives those tax revenues up.
Well, and I will say probably at some point in the near future, as I mentioned, I know Bristol, Tennessee wants to have joint meetings and talk some about the CVB and metrics and its structure. So, those ideas may come up there as well. But I think for us, the place to start here was just in general with funding and trying to come up with a mechanism. Again, I don't know that we'll, this will be a conversation, an ongoing conversation that we will have to continue to have. But I think, yeah, at some point, you know, you'll want to look at some of that as well. Those are probably things to look at, so. Do you have a comment, Ms. Reinhardt? Well, I mean, since we are talking about the CVB, I guess if you had, then you provided the information.
Thank you. And the information came from Christopher Perrin, who's our new CVB marketing director, by the way. So, he did all that, that you're looking at. Can you hear me okay? I'm Beth Reinhardt, President and CEO of the Bristol Chamber of Commerce. And I just wanted to say, number one, thank you because when we go back and dig for information to try to give you all data, we go back to the early 2000s and the late 90s. We were doing this same thing 20 years ago. We were still having this same conversation about how do we fund the CVB? Can we do it long term? Can we get better sustainability? So, thank you, thank you, thank you for this conversation. I don't think it's effective use of any of our dollars to continue to have to do this time and time. We're happy to come provide any data and research and updates to you all reporting. But I think just talking about the same thing over and over again, to your point, is not effective use of our time or the monies that you all invest in tourism funding. And I want to say too, that the tourism funding that you all provide is not for Discover Bristol. It's to support the tourism businesses in this community. That's where it's going. And I think we forget that last leg. I mean, it's to support the tourism economy that we have that's the biggest part of our economy here right now. So, chopping that off at the knee is not beneficial to the big picture of our community here. And I would beg to differ, Councilman Mumpower. I mean, we have been targeting strategically. We spend hours every single day on the phone with experts in Virginia, in Tennessee, and across the country who do this work, who know what they're doing. They're up to their eyeballs in data and research. And what we do is very strategically targeted. It is not throwing spaghetti on the wall and seeing what sticks. There is, we use the little bit of money that we get, and I'm just going to be real honest here. The little bit of money that we get, we can't get a lot of the data that you all want. You can't give somebody $10,000 and say, go out and buy a Ferrari and tell me how she runs. That's just not how it works. So, with all due respect, we do very targeted and strategic work at Discover Bristol. There is no just, let's figure something out. I mean, the hours that are spent with experts who do this is incredible. And what you get, the return that you're getting for the investment that you give is incredible. And a big part of that is because we have the assets here in Bristol that a lot of other communities don't have to market. You know, we have what other people want. And we're sitting on our laurels here, not taking advantage of an opportunity to market the heck out of a community that has way more than anybody else has to. So, sorry for the rant, but it's, I do appreciate very much the fact that we're having this conversation. It's long overdue and it's something that we see the return on here every single day. And those dollars come from outside the community. We're not taxing our own residents on it. And the intent of the law, when it was said you can pass a lodging tax at the local level, was to reinvest that money back into more tourism marketing. So, thank you.
The only thing I was just going to say, Mr. Mayor, is I think it's important to make sure, you know, for, let's say there's people at home watching online right now who maybe don't really understand what the CVB does. And I hear people a lot say, you know, we don't need to build our entire economy in Bristol based on tourism. I would say we're not doing that, but tourism has always been here. It already is here. And you think back, if I'd ask any, you know, citizen in Bristol, what are the biggest things that have happened here over the past 20 years in Bristol? And you think about the NASCAR race and Mumford and Sons and Rhythm and Roots, and now the Country Music Museum, and maybe something at the mall one day soon. And you think, these are all things that are really tourism driven. And they bring in the tax dollars, one to the city, which can help our police and our fire and our sheriff and our school system, and also bringing in the dollars to the small businesses for the folks that go and venture downtown and shop on State Street and eat in those restaurants and shop in those stores. So, it is important that we have this conversation. I would, you know, go ahead and say, I hope everyone agree, would agree that the CVB is a vital part to the city, to any city, but especially Bristol, Virginia.
All right. Well, as I say, this is the first of what I anticipate over this year. Will be many conversations, not just among ourselves, but ultimately with Bristol, Tennessee, trying to work together, how we can both partner to market not just one side of town, but our entire community. And ultimately with the public and through the budget process. So, it's a starting point and I appreciate everyone's opinion. And at some point, we'll come back and, as I say, probably revisit this on multiple occasions. But I did feel it really, the COVID kind of shortchanged us from having this discussion this spring. And I know without having an initial discussion amongst ourselves, it seems very fruitless to sit down and meet with Bristol, Tennessee, who have been having these discussions to have a better sense of what they, their desires are from the CVB and their funding and stuff. So, this is a good starting point. So, I appreciate everyone. All right. With that said, then I think we'll move on to item number eight, which is citizen appointments. And do I have a motion from council to appoint Mr. Herbert Jones Jr. and Jackie Naflin to the Industrial Development Authority, filling two vacancies for terms ending June 30th, 2024? And to reappoint Mr. Stephen Gobble to the Mount Rogers Planning District Commission for a term ending June 30th, 2024? And to reappoint Dave Maples to the Southwest Virginia Community Corrections for a term ending June 30th, 2024?
I move to approve the citizen appointments as presented.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Councilman Osborne and a second by Vice Mayor Farnum. Clerk Colerole.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower. Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
All right. Onto item number F, second reading of ordinance. Is F1, second reading of an ordinance to vacate all of a certain public right-of-way in the city of Bristol near Planet Fitness. Staff report.
Counsel, last week, we had a discussion, a public hearing and a discussion in regards to a portion of a city right-of-way near Planet Fitness, at the entrance there at Planet Fitness. This would be the second reading of that ordinance.
I don't think anyone signed up to comment. So, do I have a motion for a second reading of the ordinance by caption only?
I move that we have the second reading by caption only.
Second.
All right. Motion by Vice Mayor, second by Councilman Osborne. Any discussion? Clerk Colerole.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower. Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
Reading of the ordinance?
Ordinance to vacate a portion of an improved public right-of-way. And just for purposes of tonight, since we have two of these, it's at the northwest corner. It's a right-of-way near the northeast corner of parcel number 226 hyphen 4 hyphen 26 and right-of-way near the northwest corner of parcel number 226 hyphen 4 hyphen 27.
All right. Do I have a motion for adoption?
Move to adopt the resolution as, or the ordinance as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Clerk Colerole.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
All right. Item number F2, second reading of an ordinance to vacate all of a certain public right-of-way in the city of Bristol near the Commonwealth Center. Staff report.
Counsel, tonight's the second reading of ordinance to vacate that certain public right-of-way that's previously mentioned. The first reading of the ordinance was held, and a public hearing was held on July 28th. Tonight is just the second reading of that ordinance.
Okay. No one signed up, so I don't see any public comment. Do I have a motion for second reading by caption only?
I move we have the second reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Clerk Colerole.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Upstain.
Hartley.
Yes.
A reading of the ordinance?
Ordinance to vacate a portion of the public right-of-way. It's a portion of a right-of-way on Lindy Alley, west of Vernon Street, bounded by parcel number 15 hyphen 2 hyphen 41 hyphen 6 to the north. And the Vernon Street right-of-way to the east, parcel number 15 hyphen 2 hyphen 41 hyphen 2 and 15 hyphen 2 hyphen 41 hyphen 1 to the south. And parcel number 15 hyphen 2 hyphen 41 hyphen 6A to the west.
All right. Have a motion for adoption?
Move to adopt the ordinance as presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Clerk Colerole.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Upstain.
Hartley.
Yes.
All right. Item, I guess it's number nine, the consent agenda, with the pleasure of councils.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Osborne and a second by Vice Mayor. Clerk Colerole.
Farnum.
Yes.
Mumpower.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes.
Wingard.
Yes.
Hartley.
Yes.
All right. No further business. We stand adjourned.